Okay, call the meeting to order at six P M. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting, uh, G L chapter thirty eight, section eighteen. And the governor's July sixteen, two thousand twenty-two revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting, the select board will be conducted while being person and be a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for most participation by members of the public and parties with a right and requirement to attend this meeting can be found at the town's website. To this meeting, members of the public and committee members may have attended the meeting in person for those who wish to do so remotely. For those who are not in person, every effort will made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Preserved M G L seven C thirty eight, section twenty F. After notifying the chair of a public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body. May transmit the meeting through any medium. Beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. This meeting is being recorded by the town of Great Barrington and a recorder by the Bursar Edge and Bursar Eagle. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listing of agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to be accepted limited by law. We'll start with a roll call vote of the select board. Ben, Garfield, Eric.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ben, all members are present, one being remote. Select board's announcements and statements.
Nothing for me.
Garfield?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Lee.
Uh, just one thing, I was happy to see that um, the E P A has uh, sent the rest of the river transportation plan back to G E to better evaluate the rail uh, usage. So um, great job, everyone that has um, submitted their notes and their concerns. And I believe we still have until February first to uh, register comments. And I think that's a really, really good positive um, move that G E is, or sorry, the E P A is listening to us. So I highly um, recommend people submitting their comments um, if they haven't done so, but really good that they have um, they're asking for a better evaluation of the rail plan, so that's it.
Eric?
Um, yeah, nothing really, just uh, a bit under the weather today, so I figured I'd spare everybody and stay home, so.
We appreciate that, I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
New business, priority planning. All right ahead.
All right. Uh, before I get started, I just wanted to say uh, for anyone joining uh, a priority planning session for the first time tonight, we do hold these sessions twice annually. We have for about five years now, there are copies of our uh, January priority planning worksheet right on the end of the table here for anyone in the room. There are also copies of the agenda there, if you want to follow along, go ahead and share my screen for people participating remotely. Nice, mind if I dive right in? No. First stop, I know this is, this is Tom Water Works. Uh, so I continue to provide five weekly updates to the extent possible since we're still needing an executive session, of course. Our relief program is uh, is well underway, I've been sharing updates periodically on that. Uh, staff's working through the applications as they're submitted, working with a small group of senior workup volunteers as well. This board instructed me recently to conduct a financial evaluation uh, for proposed purchase of this Tom Water Works company. So we can present that to voters if this board chooses to do so. Funding for that study was approved by the finance committee on the seventeenth of January. So I've since signed that uh, agreement with E P C Engineering and they're off and running. Uh, a public report and presentation will be scheduled and shared as soon as the study's completed. I'm kind of expecting a four to six month timeline on that uh, that study. The rate case is continuing through the process steps at this time as well, and I turn, it's been briefed from me on uh, on that, that process along the way. I'll stop there.
Any questions? Right ahead.
Yeah, sure. Uh, next on your list is affordable and workforce housing aging in place. Uh, so the select board, the planning board, before the Housing Trust Fund, the trustees, um, the C P C have all been working really hard in this area. Um, recently, we did receive a grant for another round of housing rehabilitation grants. Uh, that process is underway and it's already uh, very popular. And we will be applying, as you know, uh, for another grant for housing rehab program for the next year. Uh, the C P A this year is recommending quite a bit of uh, of its funds at town meeting to be appropriated for housing projects. The twenty unit North Plain Road Habitat site that's uh, being developed by the Affordable Housing Trust along with Habitat. The subdivision for that is uh, is filed now with the planning board, the planning board will hear that in late February. And that is to construct the road and and house sites in accordance with the special permit that this board issued. The Housing Trust Fund has also issued an R F P, I believe it was in late summer. And through that R F P has issued a grant to create some housing units in Husatonic. Um, so that, that was really exciting new uh, process, we were able to put some funds to good use there. And finally, and you'll see this tonight during your joint meeting with the planning board, the planning board's been working on uh, some zoning amendments to further create uh, housing opportunities throughout town.
I just wanted to add the um, the governor's uh, put one billion dollar um, Affordable Homes Act that we hope will really create um, and preserve and enable more housing. So we're keeping an eye on that and and hoping that that has positive impacts in Great Barrington. So don't want to lose sight of that, that'll um, probably go through the legislature by the end of July. Session.
Anyone else?
Okay, I think I'm going to take the ambulance service study. Uh, this is, this is assigned to the fire department, but I just want to give uh, Chief Turner a little more time to familiarize himself with the study. Uh, it's about five years old to get this point uh, and and get settled into his job. And this is the only uh, topic on our high priority list that's uh, flagged as long range, of course. Uh, and there's not a whole uh, a whole lot to report tonight, but I, I will say that we've provided annual subsidies to help our Southern Bursar Ambulances uh, cover their budget shortfalls. We've been doing that for a few years now. We did receive another request for fiscal twenty-five, so we'll be discussing that in more, more detail during the budget process in a few weeks.
Do we have any sense what's happening with um, some of the ambulance squads or A, an ambulance squad, I think in Adams? If we're going to get any kind of repercussions here in South County in terms of um, more pressure here that we might want to consolidate or?
I'm not aware of any impacts on Southern Bursar kind, Chief, you know, the benefit.
Okay.
It may be fine that we put this on a select board agenda to talk about to either fully support Southern Bursar and help them, work with them. Or continue in this way instead of to a parallel pass. And I'm sure that this board has really talked about it and I'm not sure that us forming our own ambulance squad were ready to do that. So having this aside priority long range may be something that we want to talk about to either move down priority or just completely remove.
Hmm, yeah, I definitely agree with Steve that, you know, we should either go all in and make sure that we have a long-term strategy. Cause I am not really clear on where we should go. I mean, it does the ask every year and we know that it'll probably grow, but where is it going to lead? So I'd really like to kind of know when a bigger um, bigger field of vision, you know, what our strategy is.
I think the original idea back in twenty nineteen was to look at ambulance services from a much larger regional um, perspective rather than just South County.
Yeah.
Central, Northern.
Okay.
Chris Garage?
Next on your list is uh, Cook's Garage, that's the property at four twenty-six Park Street in Husatonic. Part of the old Monument Mill Complex uh, on the east side of the river nearest the bridge. That's property we took for back taxes in about twenty eighteen, uh, we have done some environmental assessments there. Um, unfortunately, the building is deteriorating pretty quickly, uh, portions of the roof have fallen in. Uh, I think the next step is for uh, staff to get some recommendations from boards as to how you'd like to proceed with that site. Dispose of it, fix it, what you can do. Um, it, it'll be a pretty, pretty expensive site, so.
So will we get um, some kind of someone to kind of lead us down that path, like how much would it cost to, to raise it, how much would it cost to rehabilitate it?
And are you looking for a recommendation from the H I C first, or would that be tandem? Well, I think I defer to how the select board wants to proceed here. Uh, a year or so ago, we did have a market and financial feasibility study done that ran through a series of option, redevelopment options for the building. Fixed use, commercial, residential, and did put some general costs to that. So we have that, we are doing a market, a um, water study now to determine the commercial feasibility of the well. Um, which is not a drinking water well, but has commercial potential. Um, so I guess I defer to you to how you want to move forward, if you want to meet with the H I C, if you want the H I C to, to pick it up. I did chat with the H I C last, it was say October, November about the building. Um, but I, I think now's the time for some direction.
Why don't we have the H I C? Part of figuring this out.
Yeah, I mean, if we could get some direction on, you know, the costs of raising it, so we have something to go by and. Yeah. The feasibility um, of what it would be worth at this versus raising it. Um, and also obviously the financial feasibility of using the water.
Yeah, that's true. I think just getting, having a meeting where we kind of get the follow-up.
Yeah, yeah.
Different paths for it, I know Eric has his hand raised.
Yeah. Eric, go right ahead.
Yeah, so Chris, what would be the, the method uh, for the town to release the property to maybe a, whether it be a private developer? Or some other form of ownership? Uh, with, with the least responsibility or burden on the town as far as raising or um, cleanup or? Is, would there be a way to put it out there to the public to know that this structure, what is left of it in parcel of land is available? Without going through a lot of hurdles of remediation or, or whatever there may be?
Well, one option is to simply auction the property, uh, and I could work with the treasurer to see what that process would look like. Similar to other properties that we've taken back taxes, the town could just put it out for auction as is.
And, and as is and, and not worry, not have any liabilities to what may or may not be on, on the site.
Correct.
Okay.
The other option, which is more in-depth and would take longer is if the H I C or select board decided that there is a certain end use you would like to try to promote there. Such as what you did with the Husatonic School, saying, these are the options we'd really like to consider. Um, so that's the, that's the longer way.
Other questions?
And then that would go out.
Let's like explore all the avenues I've designed and whatever you do anything drastic.
All right, well, we'll, we'll do that.
Next up is employee improvement and retention. Uh, this was a, this was a priority added in June, I believe. List, and this has been a priority of mine since I started back in twenty nineteen. We began with a salary survey for department heads and made several adjustments, as you recall, uh, at that time, so we could remain competitive. We also made several adjustments to our collective bargaining agreements last year. And we hired a full-time H R director as of November first, and she transitioned from part-time to full-time at that uh, at that time. And she's working on a number of tasks at this time, policies to help with uh, retention and stay competitive and so on. And I, I hope to have more of an update for you at our next session, just because this is relatively new and, and she's just uh, just started full-time with us. Or, or just started full-time with us a few months ago, so. That's all I have for that topic.
And any um, new stuff, um, possibilities that'll come up through the budget sector?
Well, I was intending to request the I T director position that we didn't fund last year, but at this point, it doesn't look like that. I'll be suggesting that this, this year, so. It's going to be a difficult budget season. Moving on to key improvement centers.
So we're, where we are with that is, uh, we talked last year about the senior center, the Husatonic Community Center. Um, we've made some improvements at the senior center, we've upgraded electrical panel service and bring it up to code requirements. We've installed a commercial dishwasher, as you know, we installed the generator there. Um, the, in FY twenty-five, the intentions are to request um, a commercial kitchen that would not only be utilized, you know, on a daily basis by the staff, but also for emergency purposes. Husatonic Community Center in FY twenty-five will um, perform the heating system evaluation and, and try to introduce cooling and see what the cost is. And we're also in the process of repurposing the P D generator that came out of the police station um, to be set up to provide emergency power to the community center.
Questions?
Yeah, just going into heating, cooling centers. Um, on the budget exchange, Joe, they also going to be used as a emergency as you stated, or hope to be uh, used as emergencies. Then they obviously when it's too cold.
I think that was the intention.
Right, that's why I had asked.
Yep. Yep, so it will keep picking away at it and move as fast as we can go.
Thank you.
So Joe, your list here, um, is that FY, what, what's kind of budgeted already and, and what's going to be coming up in terms of lists for the senior center?
Um, so there's um, and, and the, the commercial kitchen, there's a request for the senior center for this coming year. Um, I do have some, some money currently to perform the heating system evaluation in the community center.
Okay.
And um, the repurposing of the generator, there is some cost with that, I think that we could absorb in our FY twenty-four budget. So that's, you know, it's, it's being looked at, they came up with a list that's going to work according to electricians. So we may, you know, look to put that on some type of trailer loaded operation, so emergency services can take it where they need it to.
Mm-hmm. So, and I guess this is a question probably when we have the budget set session, but if the kitchen is upgraded to commercial kitchen, cause I, I know that there is a need um, for a commercial kitchen in the area. And um, possibilities of renting it out, or is that something that we think that will be used all the time by the senior center, or is that once it's finished?
Yeah, I think the, the target where I was setting was a commercial kitchen in the senior center that could be used every day, but also be there for emergency purposes. And eventually, you know, do the same thing at Husatonic Community Center.
Yeah.
Um, then it could, you know, facilitate what you're talking about there, and maybe even at the senior center.
Yes. Generate some funds, yeah.
We, we do, we do let the, the community center out, so the numerous groups now that use the kitchen.
Yeah.
It's just that both those kitchens are like stoves that we have in our houses and, and can't serve a lot of people at once.
Yeah, that's great.
And we can look at the next step with emergency services, you know, the community center in the basement, there's plenty of room for storage if you decide to, you know, put cots or something down there for emergency needs or whatever stuff you might want to.
So the community center is being looked at for, right, when you say community center, talking?
The Husie, yeah.
Yeah, um, for possibly an emergency shelter as well situation?
Right, cause our emergency shelter has been correctly from wrong to you. But I, I, I don't think we have a sole emergency shelter for ourselves.
Yeah.
Everything we have is shared. So, you know, and then up at the high school of Simon's Rock, I mean, there's nothing in the downtown populated areas.
Okay.
Um.
So we'll have one in Husatonic, go on in, okay, super. Excellent, thank you.
They want to move right into, so, yeah, I'm pretty much um, um, the heating system there is, is on those, but um, we made improvements at Husatonic. Uh, we're proposing some improvements for the Husatonic Center uh, this coming year. Um, here were some tile work in the entryways, some new doors in the entryway. Um, we may change the way people enter the gymnasium, because right now everybody walks into the floor, where we might put some doors on the, on the outside where coming to the rest of you will go through the doors. Um, and also contemplate, you know, the, I think the budget makes out, maybe some new bleachers, because they're older, they're out of code. Um, so those are the intentions for, for this year.
That's right.
Is there any um, thoughts of like lockers or, cause I know pickleball's kind of picking up and maybe just kind of day lockers or?
Right, so years ago in the, in the basement was the locker rooms.
Oh.
Um, and no one uses them, so that kind of created our storage down there. But the, the, the community room, I'll call it to the right when you walk in. Um, it would be nice if we can um, have the, the people using the gymnasium go in there and change their shoes before they walk in.
Yeah.
Like the pickleball people do. Um, so, so little cobbies or something to that extent that could be used. And, you know, we talked about it with Parks Division, but they would flip flop the way that the gym is being used, because put the bleachers on the other side where the kitchen is. And those people are walking back and forth there, and on the other side, have a team over there.
Oh, interesting.
Where the lockers went into there, so.
Making them through a bleacher thing, it's just a flip flop of how it's being used. Yeah.
But again, I don't have permission from Parks.
Oh, no.
That's kind of a thought process.
Makes sense, yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So the next uh, topic is the Husatonic School, we have this highlighted in green because we're recommending that you move it to the completed section of, of this worksheet at this time. Uh, I think we've done everything we can do to, to uh, get this priority addressed, the special permit's been issued, the uh, building's been transferred, we have the development agreement in place. And so hopefully in, in time, we'll have eight new two-bedroom apartments uh, and, and renovated historic buildings. Next one on your list is uh, fiber optic Husatonic, and this is the town's effort to uh, help pay for the whole major costs in order to string fiber up to Husatonic. And hopefully provide um, middle mile service that was left off of the state's build-out years ago. Uh, I do plan to write an R F P this spring in order to um, uh, attract hopefully some fiber optic uh, installers to run the cable. Um, we'll look and see what kind of um, you know, internet provisions they can provide for the village, uh, as well as for the town buildings. And see those sort of packages they're able to deliver for residents. And uh, I'll work with the town manager, we'll get an R F P out there and we'll see what we can get. Uh, fiber optic grants are also available or applications are due this spring from the state, so we'll try to couple that and maybe bring some of our own cost down.
Good. So you said that it was left out of the state buildup, um, was that intentionally, or is that just kind of, it, it was just too much out of the?
I, I don't know why they, they did it, this was eight, ten years ago, we requested it be included and it wasn't.
Maybe that's something we should advocate for, so that if it comes around again, we, they know that we're looking forward to it?
I think at this point, um, it's reasonable for us to assume that, that it won't be provided directly by the state or by providers on a business basis. Uh, paying for the make-ready work would help, I think, internet providers actually string the service and get it done. So I think, I think we want to move forward, this is the way to do it. Uh. I just wanted to quickly uh, say that this next topic, infrastructure, uh, is very difficult to summarize in one sentence uh, on this sheet. So Joe put together uh, an infrastructure update, it was included in the packet, it was posted on our uh, on our website, you should all have a copy as well. I'm just going to walk you through some of the new infrastructure work we have happening in town now, just stop them if you want to roll on detail and then.
Um, starting out, um, the first thing is the safety, including the safety in all operations. Um, you know, we are subject to OSHA oversight, um, or you, you need to step up our safety operations in all divisions. So that's kind of the, the first and foremost on, on our agenda. Um, moving into roads, um, you've heard this from me before, we have nine, between ninety and a hundred, hundred center line miles of road. Um, FY twenty-two, we paid ten thousand feet, FY twenty-three, we did ninety-two hundred feet. Um, FY twenty-four, we have done seven thousand feet and we have another twenty-one hundred, so we're around the thousand, ten thousand foot range. Um, so, um, and then FY twenty-five, we're also proposing ten thousand feet, we're able to squeeze about in FY twenty-four out of the budget, we're able to squeeze another twelve hundred feet up our castle. We were able to do that. Um, just so you know, big picture where we are with a hundred miles of roads, our life expectancy in roads, um, between twenty and twenty-five years. We should be doing about twenty-one thousand linear feet of road to keep up. Um, so this, it's just more just to give everyone kind of a frame of mind where, where we are and where we're headed. Um, we're way down the route than what Chris informed me we did years ago, where we just used chapter ninety, so we've made strides. Um, and, and our road structure and our bridge structure are in pretty good shape. Um, we went on Main Street, Great Barrington, the pedestrian safety project is basically done. There's two crosswalks that need to be painted and textured in the spring, we'll get that done and that will finish up, not only the crosswalks, but all but the nine or ten trip hazard locations.
So with that, I know uh, the rotary way, we were gonna, we're a makeshift, not a raised um, island, but that's still going to go ahead, right? That would be part of the?
Be painted, right.
Okay.
Yep. So there's not a raised when there are the roads and.
But it'll be a type of, a painted.
Yep.
Island.
Okay.
And will that be like how Lennox, is, is Lennox, is it, is this the same kind of stamped paving that downtown Lennox has that kind of raised?
But ours are not going to be raised.
They're not going to be, so it just.
It'll be flat, just like they are with the pavement that's there now, and they'll just be stamped and colored.
Just looks like prayer.
Yep, it'll look like prayer, yep.
Is that illuminated and painted?
What's that?
Is that illuminated and painted?
It is, yeah, it has a illumination to it. Um, the other thing that's happening in the background for Main Street is we were successful and get a bottleneck reduction grant from S D O T. Main Street's being studied now, um, to, to try to reduce the traffic issues that we're having there, you know, between coordination with crosswalk sidewalks. Um, traffic signals, we've done a lot of tweaking the traffic signal times to try to adjust and make traffic on Main Street flow a little bit more. So um, uh, uh, S D O T contractor is studying it for us now, and their recommendation would be phase two. And we would possibly be in line with for some improvements there.
Sorry, Josh. Um, is this just for timing lights, or is, will there any, be any kind of structural changes to?
It's really for the flow of traffic, so if there's some, some construction activities to, to supplement the flow of traffic, traffic, it would be recommended. But I think what we're finding right now is communication of signal to, to the others, you know, um, you know, pedestrian crosswalks, the two crosswalks, you put it, cause every time we stop traffic in Mexico. Um, there's some differences though, Mass Highway um, has, has, I believe, um, their order of operation is pedestrians first. So um, every time you push the button, it stops traffic. Not sure that's exactly how our signals are set up right now, we're nowhere to go through Great Barrington, but there may be some, you know. We, we won't know until the studies come out, because when they, when they're, they've studied their bucket, doing traffic counts.
But they're not going to kind of start sending traffic one of the side streets or anything, just looking Main Street up? Just traffic signals and communications?
Right, I think it's pointing to rotation in the summertime, every time someone hits the crosswalk and the lights change, they reach back up to the mountain.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, the nature downtown, and you would want to encourage people walking, so unfortunately that's.
Exactly, we want to encourage people to come down and not avoid downtown because there's a traffic jam either.
Yeah.
You know, you know, for example, on Elm Street, when you pull out, it was whenever you wanted to turn right on red, it tripped the signal. Okay, well, we changed that, so it trips and clears if the people move on. So we put a sign across the street and, you know, that saves that signal from changing thirty or forty times a day, which helps. Those little things like that, that hopefully we can capitalize on.
What what's the scope of the recommendations that you think that the study will bring? Just like how big or how small are you expecting the recommendations from the DMT?
I I don't really know. I think it's it's it could be maybe there's some new technology to make the signals talk to each other a little bit or something.
So you think it'd be more focused, it's more focused on signal flow than?
Traffic flow, yeah.
Yeah, than infrastructure and?
I mean, we have quite a few crosswalks, yeah, Main Street section, which we need.
Does the state have anything to do with it? Rights, they have something, they own some of these rights and they mandate the changing all the time, pressing the one on the Bridge Street.
No, the the state did the project and then they turned all the lights over to us. The only light that the the state owns is the one at Boucher Square. On state road stock control. Everything else in town is ours.
Beef about us, are you?
What's that?
Does anyone have a beef about my rural, you know?
Yeah, who do people see? Like if there is something wrong with signals or you know, that's missed time, do they, do you?
Yeah, they would call the DPW office. Yep. Yep. You know, the police have the keys to get into them in a situation that put them on flash. If if it's off hours, but you know, we don't have that expertise at house. So we subcontract all that.
So there's a tripped light or signal that we would let you?
Well, we have the ability to go out and reset.
Yeah.
And if that does it, that's fine. But sometimes what it does is when you reset, you clear the memory and you can't diagnose what happened. One thing I'm looking to do, I'm waiting for proposal to come in, but you know, have a yearly maintenance program with these where they come in, they clean the detectors up because, you know, you get the detectors dirty, you get a drop of water on the spider spider nest and it trips the light. So by doing that a couple of times a year, it could help.
Is there any rhyme to reason on Bridge Street? Why sometimes you can get five tower through there and other times you get fifteen?
Well, I I know I had, I'd seen that a couple of times, but it's the signals working properly. It trips and and it lets the amount of people through. It only is set for a certain time. What's not set up in that one, like over by Domaine is there the one of, you know, coming over the bridge. What that that happens is I think it's set for like thirty seconds. It lasts thirty seconds where the cars through. And if the queue still sees cars, the next time around it adds fifteen seconds to it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And it does that, I think, three times and that kind of maxes out. So that's something I talked about the signal company that we could do at Bridge Street, but the thing is, it's what we're finding the traffic on Bridge Street is people that are trying to bypass Main Street. So you're you're not, you're letting the same amount of cars through regardless, you know, whether it's Main Street or Bridge Street. Ideally, people stay on Main Street would be great. But those are things that hopefully this study will pick up to.
That's great.
So just moving on, phase two, pay in Grove Street, Longback Street, Chester Ridge, who's a tonic has been completed. Monument Valley Road, which is phase three of FY twenty four money. It's in design. We're actually meeting with the superintendent and the facilities, people in the school district, because if I leave that up there about around you know, time the kids are coming and being released from school, it's a little bit of a nightmare and somewhat times unsafe because people are parking in the turning lanes. So hopefully we're going to create some areas where people can park off the road. I suspect that we've talked about the school paying for the teachers that facilitate funding. Be some type of. Earl Street was something that was added. We had the the street got washed out pretty good in the July tenth rainstorm last year. We we changed some grades there and hopefully keep any keep the minor flooding from going down the street. There's a bigger drainage project that has to happen there someday. Upper Castle Hill was a piece that was added in FY twenty four. We're going to squeeze that into the budget. Looking forward to FY twenty five. With proposing Hart and Gil Hart Street, who's a tonic and Gilmore Ave and Great Barrington. That there's there's drainage work that needs to be done on both those streets. Intentions would be to do the drainage work in the the summer months this year with the drainage contractor patch it for the winter. And then come back in the spring of twenty six, which is still FY twenty five to pay Gilmore, Art Street, Kirk Street, Or Street, Ferry Terrace and who's a tonic. That'll settle for the winter and and better pay it. Crack sealing was something that hasn't been done in the town for a lot of years. Last year, the town approved some money for that. We did eleven point six miles, which helps us along along our roads a little bit, you know, by sealing the cracks, keeping the water from getting in the subways and heaving the roads. Route forty one is a little bit beyond that right now, but Route one eighty three, we're looking to do something like that. Help. You know, get a little bit more time on that.
May I just have a quick moment? Were you able to have anything happen up on the corner of Mansfield and and the Lashboro, the Houston Mansfield and Castle Hill and the corner where the?
Oh, yeah, we took care of that drainage.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, we did that with our crews.
Thanks.
Winter maintenance. Liquid de-icing is is you all know, we introduced it this this past season. It's working well. It's helping in a lot of ways. It's allowing our roads to be, as soon as the the weather starts. Our roads are technically being attended to by creative rhyme solution and and keep the bonding down. Unfortunately, it's not used useful all the time. When we have rain ahead of time, it doesn't work. So it's working well. We're on a little bit of a learning curve, but and we're we're looking to expand that in FY twenty five to some of the more, not the secondary roads. And just so you know, this is when we're doing this pre-treatment, it's all happening on a normal working hours. We're not, I used to snow and ice overtime. And we could put it on three or four days ahead of a storm. So there's a lot of good advantages to it and it saves about thirty percent of our salt usage.
Yeah, I think it's been great. It's a good job.
And you're you have you started doing it on sidewalks already?
You know, we we've done it a little bit.
Okay.
We we have a couple of pieces of equipment. We did who's a tonic.
Yeah.
I think you've probably seen that, but the equipment's too big for the sidewalk. So we will implement that on the side of the main sidewalks. Especially Main Street and the who's a tonic sidewalks, because you might get caught, you might get complaints every once in a while. How come the who's a tonic sidewalk takes so long? Wow. But the reason is, is they're right up against the edge of the road and until we clear the roads at the end of the storm, it's hard to clear the sidewalks. So by doing that, hopefully it's going to buy us something. There's we also, we also do perform winter maintenance on quite a few private roads in town. And we we had some damaged equipment in previous years. So we reached out to all the towns via letter or all the private roads via letter, and we had a great response to them taking care of their roads and that could what they can do. So we'll do that every year.
You got me. They put money out.
Yes, they took care of the maintenance of it. They they graded it, they felt possible, they caught brush back.
Back just a little bit again, you said you were saving now with the liquid?
Yes, sir.
Prevention with the road. What are we doing with the saved money?
Well, it comes out of our snow and ice operating budget. So the budget will just come in, you know, at or below where it would have been.
Can use that much next year or something.
That goes to free cash.
It goes to free cash if there's anything left, but the the snow and ice budget isn't something that we adjust every year because we're allowed to overrun that one. It's kind of a, you know, financing thing. So I'm not sure. There's too much savings that ends up there.
I just the fifteen percent of roads that were adjusted, did they just, they're not getting any?
They were not. They were non-responsive.
Oh, are you still treating that?
Oh, yeah, we're still doing that.
Even though they have, so do they have like a second, they have a warning or something or they just kind of get?
Not sure how much we can do. I think in the past I was told that was done. And maybe some of the presidents tried to bring a lawsuit against it. We're not taking care of it.
I mean, what if one of our pieces of equipment is damaged, one of these fifteen percent that don't do anything? I mean, we have a.
That happened and we fixed the equipment last year, but what's our repercussions?
So I'd like to follow up on that. I mean, we've already gotten a warning and we're having damaged equipment. I think we should.
This year is completely better.
Yeah, but like the fifteen percent is still there. So.
Right. Well, we can do it earlier this year and if we if we don't get the response, and you want us to let the select portal to take a stab at it, we'd go ahead and do that.
So our choice is just not, basically don't treat those fifteen percent of roads or?
That would be your goal.
And we would have to get legal opinion, but we can do that. So maybe come to us at the end of summer, beginning of fall.
You can just remind us if there is some damage or there's something that you recommend that we do.
I think you'll hear in the future, I have had a request for one neighborhood that's private to become on our winter maintenance program. Showing in the process of sample and what I feel the cost and manpower would be to do it. And then we'll probably share it in discussion with more.
Thank you.
Trouble spots, Alford Road and Division Street, we've had numerous accidents over there. We've done some improvements with LED signs and increasing visibility and stop lines. It's hard to say if it's working. I think we've had one accident there since we've done it. So we've improved that a little bit. We're actively addressing the swales and the driveways that is charged water into the roadways, doing a lot of that with our own crews, but there's some substantial icy conditions that get created by this. We're getting a lot of support internally through the town, you know, forward and backward. So in in the next year with the highway, I'm looking, hoping to focus on improving our 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 philosophy, how we run the department, um becoming more proactive instead of reactive. So hopefully we work on, you know, things that have little programs to take care of things. The town gardens, we've had, we planted forty four hundred bulbs, so hopefully we'll reap the benefits this spring. In twenty twenty four, we have a couple of gardens proposed. Stanley Park, which we had a nice donation to help with, and who's a tonic roundabout, we all know where the who's talk roundabout is.
No. You don't think they do?
That's.
How you call that?
National Grid is in a process of changing our streetlights. Target date is is June of twenty twenty four and we reduced our electrical request for any electric bill next fiscal year and this request.
Joe, I did have a question on that. So we do have a resident that lives on Railroad Street and that, you know, there's a different difference between the lights on Railroad Street versus Main Street. So you can see that, you can see the warmth, the change. So is it going to be closer to what it is on Main Street or there?
I have to look at, I'm not sure which.
Remember that request?
Yeah. Yeah, I have to look at it and see.
Yeah, it's just, you know, like on Railroad Street is kind of piercing lights, you know, the streetlights, and then when you go to Main Street, it's warm. And you can, when you're on, like basically under a corner, you can see it's it's definitely piercing.
There is a difference.
And so I'm just wondering, can we get that warmth? That's on Main Street to be on Railroad Street, which is?
Well, the lights we we speced out with National Grid are the lower Calvin, I think it's called. Then so it's a warmer color instead of the bright.
So that might solve that issue possibly? Okay, so there's a big solution.
You always got to remember when you're looking at an LED light, you're seeing the dial and you're not, you don't have you know, the lens like you do on some of the metal alloys that kind of stop them to look. So if you look straight at it, it's going to look brighter.
So that will be Railroad Street and Main Street or just?
Yep.
Okay. And when is that going to be done?
It's starting now. They're actually, you'll probably see it in some neighborhoods already.
Okay. Thank you.
This past summer, the drainage or the drainage, it's sewer to Conicab, Castle Hill, phase one, where the whole hill project has has been on the books for a while. Phase one design will happen in FY twenty five with intentions to do the first phase in FY twenty six. There's a steep price tag of four to five million dollars a year for three to four years to to do that. Drainage study on Route forty one, this is tied to everything that comes down just north of Welcome Street out of the Goldski Hill Omega area. It comes down and floods out forty one and the Pearl Street and George Street neighborhoods. So we've done that study and we know it needs to be done. I did not request the money enough, what twenty five, but we can in the future years. Park Street, Route one eighty three. Tied into, like you heard me say, crack ceiling earlier, what we're looking to do is work with Mass Highway, version regional planning and have this considered a tips project for improving not just the road structure, but sidewalks and bike paths. It's probably a five to seven year process, but at that point, the road will need to be done. Hopefully we're getting this one in time.
We know you need to be smart enough to put the proper signs on the road.
Yep. Yep.
It's smart enough.
So the benefit is we're responsible for the engineering, which is very expensive to do the design engineering according to the standard, but they will take on the construction cost. Transfer distinction, we got all our permits up to date. One compactor has been replaced. We're working on a second compactor replacement. We have grant funds to replace the safety ramping, allowing the, and that's to be done in the next few weeks. We, within the next few weeks here, also will have a textile recycling bin up there. Right now, there's there's a couple in town, but we'll have one at our facility and you know, the kiosk is still apparently listed a few years ago, so people can purchase their disposal items right up there.
I just had a question about the composting.
Yep.
So that's free. You don't need to add for that, right?
Right now. Right, right now it's free because it's being done under it right now. So what we're going to do is we're we're going to have a tracking list up there for the board health to see how much we're doing because if the grant's not available, getting rid of the compost next year will be a cost.
Okay.
So we could still, you know, find a grant for that or or the board health could find a grant for that or you know, we could do it as a fee, a fee service like we do with other things up there. So it's a kind of a one year.
A one year.
And I think the move is over back, I should probably talk a little bit.
So we'll get a report after a year and make that decision.
Yep. Sidewalks, Weston Lewis, you see it's being worked on and stopped for the winter. Judges are completed in the spring. Who's a tonic rail trail, phase one has been completed. Sidewalk improvements, Alford Road, Castle Hill, just up top, where has Castle, it's iconic, Alford. It's a bad quarter there. We're trying to design a way to put a sidewalk up. Waste water, pump stations, it's it's in progress. We're eighty percent complete. We would be probably complete if there wasn't very material available. Fairgrounds, we have electric service that's still replaced down there. We're working through the details of the reasons. Collection system improvements. The main, so what we do every year here, and I think we got a couple of years to go, is we analyze for inflow, infiltration that costs us money to treat this work because of the external water that comes in. So we basically, before my time, it was set up, you know, just do the study one year, come up with the project, do the project for next year. So we have someone engaged for the four of the study and we'll be doing year three. Year three improvement this year, which will be lining Castle, Christian Hill. Some of you may or may not know, but we had emergency line replacements that was completed down behind the fairgrounds. Moving on to town buildings. We have completed the asset management program for five of our buildings. It has identified immediate, short term and long term needs. The immediate needs of those five buildings is approximately eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. Of which we're going to try to build fifty percent of that in the budget for this year. Highway garage is fire and security alignment, been installed and functioning. Senior Center, we reconstructed the parking lot. That's been completed. We put a new sidewalk and picnic table. Area and the exterior lighting has been installed, some dishwashers.
Joe, I just had a question on the building asset management program, that draft report, we're going to be seeing that. I have a question.
It's available if you want to. I can.
So I'm just curious what buildings were noted as immediate.
Okay, so we studied five buildings. We ran Phil Mason, Town Hall, the courthouse. What is it? Crisis Fire Station.
So what were the ones that were? Oh, I mean, I'm not trying, I guess.
Hundred ten thousand dollars was there? Hundred ten thousand dollars was at our fire station.
Um, the, it's always time. Oh.
Yeah.
The new one?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
So that was the number one?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you tell us the others or?
Um, you know, I I think we had some leakage of the skylight, you know, that, you know, why do we have a flag roof on skylight here in the versors? You know, the the pre, it's a pre guest building. There's a lot of cracks that need to be filled and cleaned up. It's, those are some of the major things.
Was Graham still part of this?
Graham, that was part of it, yep. I don't remember the number off the top of my head.
So this will come out during the budget when you're talking about the ones that you.
What I'll do is I'll, I'll distribute it to you guys.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
So just finished on the senior center, we've replaced electrical panel and upgraded it to be cold. We're looking to improve or improve the parking lot lighting. And FY twenty five, BPW was making up made the kitchen and that we talked about. Town Hall stepped one of the both of the TV systems with installed in the foyer. We've installed a new fire line plant panel, which also supports our elevator upgrade. And the elevator upgrade is proposed for FY twenty five. Elevators in our town, we have three, we have luckily, we have nine year certificates on all of them. Somewhat difficult to keep. Courthouse flooring and carpeting is on ninety five percent done, weatherization. Is needed in the building. I'll be applying for a green communities grant for that work. And I don't know, Mark, if you want to discuss this at all now, but. I think we're gonna propose a special article for the courthouse. Mark's been working on a lease agreement.
Yeah, we, we should be reviewing, George should be seeing the ten year lease renewal soon, which includes some. Some upgrades to the building. So. You'll see this year, we're gonna propose a special article to fund some of those exterior painting, things like that.
But the lease pays for those over the term on there.
Right.
Yep.
Will we be increasing that lease?
Yes.
Town Hall campus. So we've been working on this. I don't know how far we want to get into this here, but the price tag had been substantially more. What I think we could have before. So we're reevaluating it down to some of the basic needs and are opposed to something like that later this year.
And Joe will come back to us when I can, we have to go on it anyway, sorry.
Mason Library rooftop unit was replaced and completed. The, the, the whole building management control system does not work there. It hasn't worked for years. So I have that on my list with four five green communities as an energy efficiency. CPA has approved to replace the exterior stairs. Great. Ramsdale Library, the boiler has been replaced, handicap accessibility project has been completed except for some spring touchups. And I'm also applying for a green communities grant. For the heating system there because it's an old steam boiler system which works, but it's not zoned and it's not, doesn't have a building management system to control it. Once being occupied. So like there's a substantial energy savings that could occur there.
Would that cover windows too? Replacement windows?
I don't know. That's my feeling. That's a little bit better than me.
Yeah, for energy efficiency.
Green bearings, police department. The, we put the, um, east air conditioning heater dispatch, it's, it's manned twenty four hours a day. The R H V A system there. Is, that hasn't been working efficiently in years. We pull that building with window air conditioners and we heat that building with, with a bunch of little portable. Heaters. So we got something up and working in dispatch. It's, it's not a Band-Aid approach. It's part of building a, the future system. Emergency dinner has been replaced, as I mentioned, the old generator is being repurposed. And the long term HVAC solution is in the design process and hopefully takes some direction and less of itself. Parks, we continue on the benches, we continue to build cash and over style benches.
What is that? It was not on Google.
It's, it's the, it's the ones with the concrete legs and the wooden seat and the wooden back.
Mostly are green slides, you see in concrete on the sides. We have all over town.
Yeah, they're all over town.
On Main Street?
No, not on Main Street.
So.
Oh, I think.
We can actually make, build this bench ourselves in rainy days and cold days with the buildings and grounds group. Probably more than half the cost of somebody's metal benches.
Yeah.
So what's that?
Less than that.
Less than.
That's good.
Yeah, I'm sorry, less than half, yeah. And. You know, we can use some very good quality wood. That's gonna have some longevity to it too.
One of us I have is, would you talk to the design committee? There's a name for that committee, obviously, but in terms of placement, because the metal ones were so awkwardly placed. And, you know, just. So just to create like little parklets and, you know, opportunities to, to talk to each other, but I really think. That that committee will have a sense of how to place benches and have people be able to communicate with each other. The design.
Not sure that's what they do.
Don't they, don't they kind of have like, are they consultants sometimes in terms of just? I mean, I don't know. Some of the people on it seem to have a good eye for just, but it's not, it's not like asking, but what I'm just saying.
We'll be glad to put them wherever you want them.
Yeah, it's just like, who's gonna make that call? Cause I just don't remember when the metal ones came. It was kind of questionable on some of the placements.
The number one, the problem was some merchants said people wanted to look at the street, so they turned them around. Other people said they wanted to look at the building.
Yeah, even at the plane where someone that has a sense of how benches might be used could guide you through that.
He's talking about the parks now and parks.
We just spread them out.
Memorial Field. Is pretty much on schedule. Weather preventing will be able to be playing baseball late spring there. Looking metals, the softball field has been, the infield has been refreshed by the buildings and grounds group. We did that internally. The driveway, the lower driveway has been upgraded by those two grounds groups and we're in the process of. Rebuilding both dugouts on the softball field and both dugouts on the Williams Field. Grove Street Park. Additional park is big created by both his grounds. The court has been made handicap accessible. New play equipment is ready, is on schedule, be delivered in March and that'll be installed by the buildings and grounds group. And CPA has approved funding for the reconstruction of a multi purpose court there. Blake Mansfield reconstruction is underway and on schedule. It's probably stepped down for the. Bridges, Cottage Street, Division Street, Ground Bridge. Much like before, it's still being on the mass DOT list for FY twenty five to be advertised for bidding. Which means FY twenty six could possibly be some construction. Don't think we'll see all three bridges quite once. I think it's gonna be.
How long's it had as bridge street? How long's the cottage street been unavailable?
Six or seven years.
So it stays very little behind.
Well, they said FY twenty five, so they're.
Yeah, initially that's in five years.
So it's about five years now, I think. And, and we decided to wait because it's about five million dollars or was, and otherwise the time would have.
I know that's what we were raising.
Yeah.
I think it's been more than five years.
Well, there was FY twenty five, they were supposed to start construction and. They won't, they'll be close to it. Brookside Road Bridge is probably the next worst bridge we have in town, which is a very similar one to the Division Street Bridge. The intentions are that. When the temporary bridge is taken out of Division Street, it would be brought up and used on Brookside Road. So we're actually starting. The design stages for the temporary bridge. And again, that won't happen until the new bridge is being constructed. But we want to be ready about Division Street over Williams River. We evaluated that bridge and came up with options. From the rehabilitation, various stages of rehabilitation, the related cost and the lifespan each individual. It looks like the best choice for us is about an eight hundred thousand dollar. Cost and we'll probably get twenty five to thirty years out. That's not any constructions, not in FY twenty five, but we'll, we'll put it in FY twenty six. We'll do the design work in FY twenty five.
Joe, I just had a question. The bridge, do we have any sense of what the priority might be for the state for the three bridges?
They're in all three, three, each of them are in a different. Engineering contractor's hands. I mean, they, they did test boards on Cottage Street this past summer, which means they're designing foundations. Division Street, we haven't seen any activity by any contractor. And on the State Road Bridge, we did see them do some layout. So markings you see on the road up there, but no, no drilling. So if I was to guess, it's Cottage Street, State Road, then Division Street.
Great, thank you.
Just by the activities we'll see. We haven't seen, I think we get plans around twenty percent, twenty five percent. We haven't seen that yet.
Okay, great, thank you.
Pumpkin Hollow. Bridge is a wooden bridge. Wooden bridges need annual maintenance, so generating a maintenance program for that bridge so we can catch up and then keep it, keep up with it adding. Last but not least, cemeteries, a consultant in the cage. We'll, we'll be looking to revise the rules and regulations, pay for the process, and clients with master general law. And part of this process will be, will recommend a new feed to the select board.
A new what? You recommending what?
And then the next step with the cemeteries is to, to come up with. Some computer based mapping program right now, I'm still, I hand of all the records. Of the web base and keep to look up on to see what the top, see that things are. Like that.
We got a good team, they're working at it.
Do it easy, man. And a lot of stuff we did, done in house now, thanks to you, that is done in house and saves us money and seems to get done faster and better quality.
And I really appreciate your, your reports about what you're doing in terms of treating the roads and the weather and.
You know, at, at, at least you know what we're thinking and I, I think we're, we're sharing what knowledge we're learning, we're continuing to learn. I do, I am looking to put road sensors on trucks this year so we can see the temperature of the roads at different locations because. Our elevations in town go from fifteen hundred and fifty feet down to six and seven hundred. And it's a different world in both locations.
Yeah.
So it's a team approach and, and the, the parks are all coming together with these new challenges and working hard at it. Exciting.
Yeah, well, other towns are taking notice. They want to know what we're doing right. So obviously, thanks and your team.
So seven of five, let's go over the rest of the high priority and then we'll move to the planning book that's out here. So a lot of those, those covered. Somebody hasn't?
Yeah, I'm gonna skip right over Main Street, Rescue and Safety and Traffic since Joe covered that. Public Safety Staffing Plan, a real brief update for tonight, really going through the stages of developing this plan. It did take an opportunity to meet with Chief Berger before he left, and I met recently the. Chief Storey and Chief Turner to continue the conversation. We're, we're just gathering and reviewing staffing data now. So we'll, or we also added a new patrol officer, as you recall, in the fiscal twenty four budget. We added a new firefighter, which started, that position started January first. We filled that position. Just to get us heading in the right direction with our, with our public safety departments and we will continue to work on this and. Circle back with our findings at later date. Any questions there? Okay, so moving on, Ramstill Library Accessibility, we're also recommending, is this topic being listed in the list? Project is, is pretty much wrapped up at this point, other than some spring plantings. Does that work?
Clean up plantings are all in.
Okay.
Is the, is the handrail in place? Is that part of it? The hand, the handrail lot where it's designed is, is in place.
Okay.
I planned to put handrail along the walkway. It wasn't part of this project, but it's, it's not needed by code, but we plan to. Yeah, another project that came out here.
Yes.
That's beautiful.
Again, just space and one of our.
Okay, you can remove that. I had, I was like, well, I would say otherwise.
The work at Reed's is a work in progress. Vermont contractors under contract EPA are out there now, drilling, 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 testing, testing, testing. Hopefully that work is concluded by about April or May, and that gives us a sense of. What remediation work will be required. So they're still testing limits and depths of the contamination in that area. Play that'll give us a scope for the remediation work that's, that's required. As I said, we have some funds in hand and we'll see if we need any more. And then. Figure out what to do with that building, depending on. How much remediation we can accomplish.
So this extra, oh, sorry. This extra testing is covered by the grant or is that costing us anything?
This is covered directly by EPA. EPA has been a fantastic advocate, partner and funder for us.
Thank you.
I would say since today, it seemed like this is taking quite some time.
It's taking a long time.
No, it's not more than it should be. What, what's happening is the EPA. Now, the EPA isn't paying for this, but it's, it's a huge amount of, of contamination. And if we had to do this on our own dime, it would be a, a major problem. Well, people don't realize, and it's why it's good to have this meeting, is that all we don't see work being done there. There's like, about like fifty people screwing around. It's, work's been. Being there forever, but it's just such a huge amount of contamination that we're, we're ending up with. We, we surely wouldn't have liked it done two or three years ago when we talked about what we're gonna do with that property, but it hasn't been.
So the remediation, that's a whole nother cycle of grants and trying to find money to really deal with it. This is just happening.
Well, we have a half million grant in can.
For remediation.
And then EPA. And DEP. Helped us get additional funds to actually determine that that grant is gonna be enough. And so here we are testing again.
Gotcha.
The remediation scope is not yet finalized. It's pending all the work that's currently going on.
Okay, so we, so obviously we're less known.
Next topic is short term rental compliance. And as noted in the summary section here on the, on the worksheet, a registration portal was built out. It's now live. It has been since April. We currently have about a hundred and ten registered STRs operating in our town. We've identified through the software that we use, another sixty seven. STRs that are operating but are not currently registered. So each one of them received their first one hundred dollar fine. Last week, we're a little behind schedule, I realize, but. We've also been short staffed in my office for quite a while. Our hope is that that will encourage these sixty seven people to, to register their, their short term rentals. Before we send out the second, uh, second violations. So if they don't, then they'll receive a second violation, which is a two hundred dollar ticket and just keep going until everyone is registered.
So question on that. So a hundred dollars, are they being charged per day?
No, not right now. We just don't have, unfortunately, we don't have the staffing to be as aggressive as, as we would like to be with this. We don't have any staff assigned. To short term rental compliance. We have two or three staff members that are just taking. Taking bits and pieces and then.
So we locked, yeah, are we locked into that now? A hundred dollars? That's part of that.
The bylaw says one hundred, it, it, it's in line with the statute, a hundred for twenty nineteen, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred and a hundred dollars per day, yeah.
Okay, and that's a, a statute that we have to bottom, yeah.
And Mark, is that number of? The numbers are listing, they're fluctuating.
It changes every day.
Yeah.
You know, a new Airbnb or VRVO rental will come on, one or two will go off. That number's always.
And then in terms of L L fees and, you know, are really targeting towards corporations. Do you have any kind of information about that or?
Yeah, every application that we receive is reviewed. So if it's not in compliance with our bylaw, it's done.
Have we had any fix up in that?
Yeah, we have denied zone.
Okay.
But it does take quite a bit of time, but at this point, you know, we had a, been a number of, like. Hosts registered right away when the portal went live and now they're just tripling again. So we have more time to. Really look a little more closely at each one and. We're also seeing renewals start to come in for year two now because we're in year two of, of the short term rental program.
And we're pretty happy with the Gonna West.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Just doing the job. That's all I have for that topic. That's all I have for that topic. Stop sharing for a minute, second, oh, Rebecca, you're on.
So, um, the priority that the Board of Health has is sustainable materials recovery, um. And as it says there on your spreadsheet, uh, we launched a composting pilot program up at the transfer station, uh, that started. January nineteenth, and we've contracted with, um, Berkshire Composting, which is a Great Barrington-based company. They come every day to the comp, to the transfer station to take away whatever composted materials. Or food scraps were dropped off at the transfer station. And, yeah, I've heard some good things the last two weeks that people that are using the transfer station have enjoyed that, and. Um, we've asked Berkshire Composting to, to track every, every month, or every time they go to the transfer station, how much. Um, like how many gallons, because there, you're putting the, the food scraps in, I think, forty gallon barrels. And, uh, she'll submit that report once a month back to the health department, so we can see how successful this is, hopefully. So, I, I think there was a question earlier about if this program is free, and it is free for residents of Great Barrington. No transfer station sticker is needed.
What's the likelihood that this grant might be renewed?
It was a one-time mini-grant, it was from the Berkshire Public Health Alliance, um, and they were just giving out grants with access. Funds, um, that rarely happens, that they're, um, that they have access funds, so, I mean, maybe we could get another. Six months, or I would say it's unlikely to get another year, but, um. We're working with DPW to qualify for the sustainable, uh, materials recovery program, uh, through DEP. And hopefully we'll get some funds through that grant program to help sustain this if it is successful.
Thank you.
Any questions? Do we have any numbers from the first, you know, week or so that this program's been up of, of, how much we've collected so far?
No, we don't have any numbers, but that's a good point that I forgot to mention, we will be putting up, um. Uh, sign up, a sign-in sheet, uh, for those, um, that come to use the composting program, just name and address, so we can. Not only see how much weight of composting materials we're, we're getting, um, but how many residents are using this service, so. I think that will, that will go up in the transfer station, uh, this Friday.
Thank you. Great job.
Uh, moving on to trip hazards, I, I think they've all been addressed at this point, right, Joe? Yeah, we're also recommending that this topic be moved to the completed list.
So the one thing I noticed, and I think it should be removed, is I know there was change between the ballots. Some places the chains have been moved, taken down.
Have they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we? Yes.
Okay.
And then someone will trip, and who probably took the chain down and then complained with us. Yep, thank you. Uh, anyone have an objection to that? They move, that can be removed.
And Alicia is on to give you an update on the website build up. Alicia, you there?
I am here, hi. Um, yeah, so Jen and I have been working on the website redesign, and we just had a meeting with them. Um, Civic Plus on Thursday, where they revealed, um, the new design to us that we had, um, gone over, so. They had us go through lots of different websites throughout the United States to find like what, um, pieces would work best for our community. So the goal was to clean it up, um, make it more user-friendly and modernize it a little bit, um. So they got a lot of that right in their reveal meeting, and now, uh, Jen and I will go back and forth for, I think, two more meetings with them on. Just smaller changes that we want made. They have begun to, um, migrate some of the information from our current website. Um, over, so we are trying to track any changes, um, that happened from, from now until we go live. So that we can, uh, make those updates. Once we go live, um, there will be a reveal, um, to Mark and the selectmen, I believe, before it goes live. Um, where we could still make changes. And, um, so they're hoping late February, early March, and then they will do, uh, training for staff who maintain the website. Uh, and hopefully in mid-March.
Right, excellent, that's true. Any questions?
Like, just that we're changing the domain as well as part of this to a.
So, I think that, um, Mark, Mark told me to hold off on that, because he was, um. Possibly seeking, uh, an IT, um, person, like a, a director, IT director, so, um. We haven't, I think that it's been reserved, but we haven't, um, really talked about it further than that.
We did reserve a name, but we, we need some IT assistance.
Thanks, Alicia.
You're welcome.
So I think it's. We have, we don't always talk about the mother priority projects, and I, we don't have time tonight, I would think that if we have a select board meeting that's quiet. We can do those, just to see if we want to keep some on there or add anything else, but we have a planning board here, and I think we should. Call it at this point, unless someone has something urgent, that they feel we're really missing.
We will bring these back up, so I see some ones down here that they.
The, the mother?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll try, we, we won't wait six months to do that, we'll try to bring it up at, at a select board meeting that's quieter, and do those.
Well, thank you very much.
Um, well, we're waiting for now. Anyone to talk about the priority planning during citizens' speak times, we'll have another citizens' speak time at the end. For the priority plan. Any select board immediate?
Good evening, this is James Garza on eighty-four North Plain Road. Uh, just a couple of items that I wanted to discuss regarding the planning, um, thank you, everyone, for your in-depth, uh, analysis. Uh, I just wish the, uh, EPA would be a high priority, I know the. EPA was commended for helping us or coming out that rail should be used, and they're helping us with re-cleaners. However, it's a double-edged sword, because I feel the EPA hasn't done right by what the GE project should be. I believe that it's probably too late, that U D F shouldn't be in Lee or in the Berkshires, because it impacts all of us. So that's number one. Number two, I want to thank Joe for his tremendous work, I've repeated over and over that he's like great, and. You can hear in other committees how much work he's done. I'm glad that he brought the forty-one, Route forty-one culvert in front of my house. I know he said he didn't put in the budget this year, but he will in the future. This is important directly to me, because a couple of years ago, it did wash out my front driveway, which the town repaired. Uh, just a couple of months ago, we had another water issue where my neighbor Chris had a. Move railroad ties in front of his house to help divert the water from coming into his house, but unfortunately. Our neighbors in the back were completely inundated, Joe knows all this, and he did tremendous work in helping, so I really appreciate it. Uh, another item that I would like to be on the priority list is the high taxes that we're experiencing in town. As we all know, we got our tax bills recently, and it caused quite a stir among, uh, many of us, because, uh. Thanks to the Finance Committee, the tax bill has a little bit more in-depth explanation, and more is required, which the Finance Committee is going into, but. I've repeated, unfortunately, the tax increases are pricing out the people that we want to remain in our community. Which is counterintuitive to our affordable housing, uh, projects that we have, so I wish taxes would be. Priority high in not only making it transparent, but also trying to rein in our spending as much as possible. And I know the tactics are complex, because you have the town budget, you have the school budget, which is gonna be escalating, because we're building a new school. And then we have the, the fire department, which has increased substantially as well, so there's different components, but having more transparency. Which the Finance Committee is trying to do now, helps us all understand and hold down our expenses. Uh, I'm also asked about the Sears School, I know this is something that has been since twenty sixteen. I know COVID put a damper on, on the project, but then it ramped up again with. The team coming to the planning board late in twenty twenty-two, asking for an additional permit so they can get funding. That was locked in at the end of twenty twenty-two, and here we are in twenty twenty-four, and nothing has been done. Um, so these are just my comments, and I appreciate what everybody does, thank you very much.
Excellent.
I'm Paulius Shapiro, seventy-eighth and North Plain, right, I'm, I'm again voicing my concerns as to what has been, is, and the unknown, to me anyway. Transpiring with an airport clause to Great Barrington.
Well, Paul, are you gonna stay for the meeting, because this is really about priority planning, we're gonna have another.
Yeah, I know, I'm never, this is my citizen's speak time for this.
For priority planning?
Yeah.
We didn't talk about the other part of priority planning.
So you're, but he didn't speak about anything to do with priority planning either, so. So I'm again voicing my concerns as to what has been, is, and the unknown, to me anyway, transpiring with an airport, allows to Great Barrington Regional. And a Berkshire holding flight school permitted in February and April, and I'm unable to retrieve any information regarding. And or how such major thing to me, neighborhood, the town, and abiding town, specifically North Egremont. The airport has intentionally shut down since the April permitting, in part due to unenforceable conditions placed on them by the select board, by the spend. Including no night flying. At the January eleventh and twenty-fifth planning board meeting, I voiced concerns regarding the twenty-twenty correspondence. Between existing town manager, the Mass DOT Air and Ops Division, Denise Garcia, and response to the G B R town manager questions. For part number five, can the town regulate the time of day or day and week, and is it called the name of the airport, and answer no. The airport is a V F R airport. At the next meeting, I elaborated. As a V F R airport, visual flight rules airport in the United States, night V F Rs allowed, and the training is included in the basic pilot training. There's no separate night training or endorsement, it's included in the private pilot flight proficiency requirements fourteen C F R. In specific requirement experienced in fourteen C F R sixty-one one oh nine, requirement is street hours nighttime training with single-engine airplane. I said the airport at FAA real lights runway and identification lights that provide a free intensity setting. In a approximate range of, range of three miles of daylight, twenty miles at night, and also a beacon. But I have abutted the airport for fifty-two years, and there's always been night flying. Restrictions are part of an ongoing strategic plan to develop, expand the airport. Despite numerous region, reasons violations, why they can't. In February two oh eight. The state said, oh, the airport and their attorney brewer gave them plans to buy the business and the real estate. With a handwritten note merely for planning board, there's some hangers in two airports embedded in the works all along, permitting makes hangers as many as wanted by running. The only remaining overweight planning board member is Mr. Andrew, who purchased the home abutting by property in the airport, six weeks after receiving a non-publicity disposal. Disposing as required as taught before. The thing seventy-eighth and North Plain Road is a D D P permitted regulated facility within the public water supply. Permitted activity of very small quantity generated, activity class of hazardous waste generator, facility description of water body repair. Seventy-eighth and North Plain Road, Berkshire Navy Enter, Enterprise Incorporated, is having underground tanks, and the biggest concern to the water quality protection. Publicly district. On May two, two thousand thirteen, Mr. Rembold said Richard Solon regarding the airport adding hangers might be considered by his own board of appeals. As a change or expansion of a ninth performing use, who requires E B A's medical permit. Also to add hangers with likely trip following to special permitting claims of the water quality protection publicly district, believe us to say. The airports permitted were exempt from the water quality protection publicly district.
Very good, Paul, anyone else?
Hi, Donna Jacobs, two sixty Card Street, and I'd like to speak to priority one, the Zonic Water Works. Because I've been getting emails and calls from people asking me if the water's safe, and I don't know what to tell them. Uh, I think the last quarterly report from Zonic Water Works was okay, the water was fine, but I do believe that was sometime. In September, October, right, I don't remember, and I couldn't find a report as I was looking through. So again, I'm here to encourage that while all of this activity is going on with the public water system, it's, uh. Intimidating and frightening and exciting, all it wants to think that we're going to be trying to remedy the situation over time. But while the big action is happening, we still have the concerns of water insecurity in town, people want to know if they can suspend. Their Berkshire, uh, their, their Berkshire water deliveries, uh, or if they need to continue those, so. Some distribution of information to the Zonic Water Works rate payers would be useful. So that we can know whether we can stop buying water and start drinking tap water.
And I'll just say that you've probably done some water help, who would regulate that?
I know, and I'm speaking to them as well, but, you know.
So you've got one else? And then we will go on to select more time.
Is this for public or is this only to the priority?
Thanks again, so we'll, we'll have it, we'll have it again, you won't, thanks. Select word time.
I'm, I'm good right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any media time? Okay, bring up the planning orders.
Steve, did you adjourn this meeting, is that what you're doing?
No, I'm waiting for Lee to come back, this is a continuation, so.
We're having a, a humanity break here.
So for the record, there are five hundred, there's a select board here, one, uh, virtually, Eric. And the entire planning board is here, and I'll turn it over to Randy, you have some things you want to discuss.
Sure, yes, first of all, um, it's good to see you all, happy new year, and, um, thank you for, um, making time. Um, it's a busy time of year for everyone, I know, with budgets and town meeting planning. Um, but in the spirit of the joint meetings we've been having the last couple of years, um, and particularly. Uh, as it relates to initiatives around trying to create opportunities for housing in our community. Um, as you guys know, we've been working jointly, uh, with a subcommittee to come up some ideas, but in addition. Um, the planning board has been working where we can to, uh, focus on a couple of processes. And zoning-related changes, um, that can hopefully create some additional opportunities in our community, so there's two specifically. Under the, um, proposed housing-related zoning amendments, um, that are in your packet. That we wanted to introduce to you this evening, and get some early feedback if you have any, um, and. I don't know, Chris, if you want me to give an intro, or if you want to.
Happy to.
I'm gonna let Lee.
Yeah, I just, I'm gonna recuse myself, because I have, um, a hand in the acquisition of Windflower, which I believe you might be referring to, and.
We are gonna discuss a co-housing zoning amendment, it's a generic amendment, but, um. It, except, you know, recognizing that there is a facility that may fall under that, I understand.
Yeah, it's probably better.
Okay.
So, recognizing the opportunity that some old, uh, lodging establishments may be converted. In fact, one already has been, started to be used as a co-housing type facility, that's the Windflower. Uh, and the form would may, uh, be a process to be used in the same way. Uh, the planning board has developed a co-housing residential development zoning amendment that would allow these types of uses in Great Barrington. um, with certain requirements and conditions that you see in the text here. Uh, right now, something like this is not explicitly permitted. Uh, it would come through uh, as a, essentially as a hotel. We have to give a special permit to do so. Uh, this proposal would define co-housing residential development, set the requirements for it. Um, whether it's an existing building or maybe a newly built structure, either a standalone structure, maybe a mixed use structure that has some sort of co-housing in it. Hopefully, that's a brief, brief enough introduction.
Yeah, I, I think just for the uninitiated, just to be clear, co-housing is um, separate um, sleeping quarters with um shared facilities such as bathrooms, kitchens, and common space. So um, what, what we have done with Chris's assistants is put together um, and honestly, Peter's assistant, thank you, Pedro, uh, worth recognizing because he put a lot of effort into it. Um, is uh, put together some, some draft text. Um, we've uh, done our best to have it aligned with the building code so that we're not, you know, it's the same with the code. We've had a workshop meeting with representatives from Construct and Berkshire Housing, both of whom um, have similar facilities in operation, and they were really um, instrumental. Um, June Wolf and uh, Eileen Peltier, is it Peltier?
Oh. That's right, Peltier.
Peltier. Um, from Berkshire Housing. They were great in giving us really constructive feedback um, on particularly the operation and maintenance. Um, it would be by right in all zones. Um, and it would still be subject to site plan review. So that's, that's sort of the high level outline of what's in the text. Um, we are happy to answer any questions you might have or take any early feedback.
I got a few questions, if you don't mind. Sorry, I'm uh, not present with you today, but with, with the co-housing, if it's in in all the zoning areas, I guess, um, and you speak that it could be um, a new build as well. Um. In a densely populated area on a, you know, standard sized lot, I guess I'm wondering how many units would, would the restrictions be, or would it be? How, how are we planning for that? If it's a as far as the footprint on the space, how many units um of, of, of housing could be in there? How many, how many groups of people would fit that space?
Yeah, I, that's a great question. So the underlying zones are still gonna um, drive the coverage of the lot. There'll still be setbacks associated with the lot. Um, we've provided for uh, per sleeping quarters minimum square footage. Um, and we've provided for some minimum parking requirements, but outside of that, we're leaving a lot of flexibility in terms of the specifics of a design.
That answer her question?
Yeah, I guess um I guess I would just be slightly nervous of um some creative uh, designs in, in overfilling uh, a space, that's all. I mean.
Well, well, so it, it is a good question, and I think it's sort of like a fundamental um, concern that people have when it comes to site development, but there are in the zoning code setback and coverage requirements that exist now. Those wouldn't change. You'd still have to meet the setback requirements for front yard, side yard, rear yard. You'd still have to meet the minimum coverage requirement. So that's the underlying zones that we've put in place at various um, districts around the community, and, and those also limit height. So, you know, they set the general geometry for the site. So it's not as if you're gonna be able to put an eight-story building, you know, on a half acre lot. Um, because when you start laying out the parking requirements with the space requirements, with the height requirements of the building and all the setbacks, you know, you sort of back into a geometry.
So with, like, number five, I guess, with the parking, um, and it says one, at least one space for each co-housing unit.
Mm-hmm.
If, if, if somebody has um, say, four rooms and one, and you're using that kitchen, we're, we're saying it's okay for just, just one car, even though there could be four separate individuals in there.
Uh, one space per each sleeping quarter.
Oh, is that what it means? One sleeping quarter, okay. That makes more, that makes me feel better. Okay. I wasn't sure if it was this, like, one space per kitchen combined zone. That's, that was a, thank you.
No, but if that wasn't clear, that's probably something we should look at.
Yeah, I think we should actually make clear the whole density issue. And run through some city. It's just what we communicated this thing.
I don't know if that's. I just wanted to make a statement. It just seems, and I'm not knocking it by no means, but it seems like something that used to be, be done a long time ago. This isn't original, if you will. This was, they used to have houses, housing like this, forty-first Evan, my boarding house. It's not a new times, Eric.
That's fair. Yep.
It's happened. When zoning came in to the picture, around nineteen twenty, let's just say, it eliminated this type of use across the board. It just took away the ability to.
Across the country.
Across the country. And I mean, if you look at the history of our main street, there's three buildings that were built dedicated to just being boarding, boarding houses in nineteen hundred. So it's not, you're right, it's not a use that's uncommon or something that's never been done in town before.
Good idea.
Yeah, I mean, when we found out that Windflower was opening and then Thornwood, uh, I, I personally was surprised that they were prohibited in town. They actually had to go and find a workaround to allow that in town because there's nothing in our bylaws that allows that kind of uh, houses. So that's, that, that was really, for me, that was the impetus for uh, for pursuits.
I love that you included bicycle parking and laundry facilities as requirements.
Uh, we have a very substantial bike advocate in Germany, so, which is great, but um, I think two, you know, two things there with, with the biking. There's this tension between providing parking where we live in an area where there's, you know, limited mass transit and, and, and some services that you may need are not within uh, walking distance. Um, but at the same time, you know, we're trying to move in a direction where other forms of transportation could be supported. But the, the other reality is that every parking space takes up space that could be used for housing. So that's a tension that we've been struggling with as well.
Yeah, no, I mean, just, I think this is a great first step, just encouraging, you know, this kind of mixed use and bicycle, as well as the laundry facilities, which we have seen with people, the rent, renters in town.
Yeah.
It's something that's, and so just making sure that's required.
And that was some feedback we got from our partners that are working in this, this um, area of housing.
Yeah, I think we're still trying to figure out the right number.
We are. We're, we're seeking some specific comment from them, if that's an adequate amount.
Yeah, it's, it's two, four, ten units, or, or up to ten units.
This is the discussion we have. Very like to. Two from ten units.
The fact of the matter is, yeah, good start.
Were you skipping around? I just wanted to check about the bathrooms and one for every eight equal time, but not enough.
I personally feel that way too. Um, again, um, you know, we're gonna take some additional feedback from our partners who actually work in this sphere and see if that feels like the right number for them. Um, incidentally, the, some of the feedback we've received is that um, with Flower, for instance, is mostly en suite bathroom. So each sleeping quarter has a bathroom with it. That's, they said for them, that seems to work really well. Um, but, you know, if you were building new things like bathrooms are very expensive. All those fixtures are significantly costly. So, you know, can we help manage the cost of a new construction by having a, a limited number of bathroom facilities, but we still obviously want to make it adequate. So we'll be, we'll be seeking some additional comments there.
Yeah, I'd have to agree with Garfield, and I like cutting costs, but maybe not with my bathroom.
And then there's another uh, another aspect to it as well. If we have a conversion that is not an old inn, that doesn't have an en suite option, how can we kind of accommodate this old building to be able to function in this way as well? So if you, you know, if you have three rooms on a floor and there's one bathroom there, it's probably okay, but you know, I think we're, we're gonna figure out what the right number is gonna be for a new build as well.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta talk about more of that, whether it be quality, if, if you turn over, you would cause because people wouldn't be happy there.
Yeah, I mean, we all have families, and we all wake up early to go to work and school and the whole thing, so we know that's all.
Yeah.
Being the uh, yeah, being the youngest of uh, eight people or ten in my family, uh, we only had one and a half baths growing up, and it, and it wasn't pleasant, I must say. It wasn't pleasant, it wasn't easy. But I understand what Pedro's saying, though, in, in allowing the flexibility uh, to restore these old buildings. So I I do understand that there's a, a fine line you're walking there. Um, but yeah, and I, I just repeat in what Steve said, I guess there is ones tied with uh, turnover. Um, you know, although I guess you're hoping that um, these units are available and people will eventually find their permanent home or uh, um, if, if that's the cause, or a, a, a final spot. Um, in, in the tighter facilities, you know, like if, if there's one with an en suite, um, that's one thing, but if it's a if it's a, an old building that we've been searching for something to do with, and the bathrooms are limited, you know, that's, that in theory would be somebody's stepping stone to uh, uh, to their next location.
I think I just wanted to mention what kind of population you can expect in these types of facilities. Something we learned when we had our discussions with um, with June and with Eileen is that you would think that the majority of the population would be a young, a young body, right? Young people. That's not what they're getting at Windflower, I think. The other thing that was interesting too is that they are getting people who are seasonal. Uh, people that come in to work in the summertime, people that come in uh, in between jobs or something like that, or in between housing, and they stay for as long as a month, and sometimes for as long as a year, sometimes as long as six months. So it, it really varies, and there's a lot of turnover. So it's a really interesting way that this type of housing works and how it fits into a community.
Turnover doesn't necessarily have to be a bad thing.
Right.
If you're moving on.
Exactly.
And we do have a lot of seasoned workers in town, and they have a hard time finding housing.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Eric, you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, good feedback. We appreciate that. Um, the, the other item is um, uh, what we're calling um, by right multifamily housing. Oh, yep, sorry. We, we'll let you come back and get seated, and I'll pull up the. So um, again, as part of the, the diligence that we're doing to try and um, create more housing opportunities, some of the feedback that we've received is that particularly um, in filling the need for multifamily housing, um, that uh, the process can sometimes um uh, throw, throw wrench into things and prevent um, people who would otherwise develop multifamily from doing so. Um, and so our second uh, housing proposal is by right housing for multifamily, and that's multifamily that would be four to eight units, or multifamily that would be more than nine units um, would be by right, meaning no special permit would be required um, in several of the zones, and I'll just name them here, the B-zone, the HVC, the B-one, the B-two, the B-two X, the MXD, and the I-two. So they still require site plan review, but they um, uh, but they would not necessarily require us, they would not require a special permit. Um, and then we're proposing that same multifamily housing would be by special permit um, of the planning board in the I-zone. So that's just a change to the um, to the table of uses.
So with the exception of the I-zone, that, that we're proposing, these zones are all within the Route twenty-three corridor. And the majority of these sites are sites that have already been developed. There are sites also there within walking distance to most of the amenities that we have in town. So it's the, our intention is not to uh, to allow these in the open spaces of our town or in the less dense uh, communities or less dense neighborhoods. That's in fact why we're trying to get this development to happen in areas that are already developed, so we can preserve those spaces and the open spaces. Um, and they, and uh, keep the density of the, of the communities that are sorted out, out from um, from downtown and for the Route seven corridor in particular.
A, and being in the Route seven corridor or the Route twenty-three corridor, these also um, generally have central sewer and water. So they have utility services, um, and then they o- often have very good access to transportation routes via existing sidewalk systems, roadway network um, and BRTA um, bus service. So as Pedro said, it's really, we're wanting to focus in the developed footprint of the community. Yes.
Um, so Y means yes?
Why I mean, yeah.
Okay. All right, that's on my, and the second question I have is, uh, so with the I, the I-zones.
Yes.
Uh, so it used to be select board, and now it's planning board. Is that?
Right. These are specifically housing related um, developments. They're not mixed use developments. They are um, residential, purely residential in nature. Um, we've had a lot of discussion about um, housing in the I-zone, and I don't think we're, as a board, fully um in consensus about um, encouraging residential in the I-zone.
Is that industrial?
It, I is industrial, yeah, and there's a very limited amount of it. Um, a lot of it is in areas that are um, difficult to build in because they're resource restricted, being close to the river or flood plains or water quality protection overlay. Um, but if someone really wanted to go through a special permit process, um, you know, they could uh, pursue housing in those. And, and, you know, just with our historic development patterns, there are some instances of housing in the I-zone. It's just, that's, in my opinion, that's a conflict um, to have industrial uses and housing uses close together.
So what's the reasoning that if it was under the perp of the select board to change it to the planning board?
Because it's, it's residential in nature. It's very straightforward. We deal with a lot of residential projects, and so I feel like we have a good um, handle on the requirements for residential. Um, I think this board is, members of this board previously expressed some some concerns about mixed use things, but I think residential is pretty straightforward and um, something that is well within our scope of capabilities.
And could you give us an example of something that's in the I-zone that, you know, that, I don't know, is there like? I don't have the map.
Sure. Uh, like, the, the, the one we use as an example all the time is where Lanu's workshop is over off Dungeons and Bell Road.
Yes.
Um, where the solar farm, Lanu, that is, that is I-zone.
Okay.
For instance.
Yeah, I'm the outlier on the board. I'm the one that wants residential in I-zones, mainly because they're surrounded by residential districts. All of them, they're, they all abide residential districts directly, and we've gotten a few projects coming through the board that um, are industrial type projects. You've seen several marijuana um, growth or manufacturing facilities that are right next to, you know, residential. So if there's this competing thing there, and I don't know why uh, we, we have to or why the industrial users have to outcompete the residential uses there. We haven't seen a lot of residential activity in those, in those zones. But um, you know, personally, in my practice, I've seen a lot of interest in those. So.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm the outlier, I think, on the board in regards to, to this. But that's how I'm looking at it.
Yeah, so what's the argument then not to have? I mean, I guess you have said, what, what is the argument not to have residential?
I mean, I'll speak for myself as an individual, because again, I don't think we're a hundred percent consensus, but um, I think in a community, we want to preserve a variety of different land use types so that we have flexibility to bring economic development into our communities, and there are certain uses that are going to be industrial in nature. Um, that little industrial area is a good example. Um, I think there's a, an auto uh, restoration place. There's um, you know, Lanu's um, salvage and, and home building facility. So there, there are uses, and it's hard for us to think ahead as to what all those uses might be. And so reserving some land that is buildable and already has that kind of development pattern, I think. I think is, is prudent in a community. Um, and I do think that, you know, if we encourage industrial or encourage residential in those areas, that we do potentially set up conflict. Um, and, and you know, I think that's what land use planning is about, is trying to like manage some of that conflict.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just wanted to go to the nine or more units. And I wanted to know the, what the discussions were on not having a cap, uh, on that number. So it's just nine or more. Um, and it would be by right, um, across the board besides your, uh, I-zone. And I, I just wasn't sure, I, I guess I would just like to hear everybody's thoughts on, on that.
Yeah. So again, similar to the co-housing, um, item, um, the underlying geometric requirements for height and setbacks and coverage would still remain in place and would, would, you know, create the limitations on how much development could happen at that location. So it, it's the same principle and we're really trying to like lean into that principle that as a community, we've worked for decades to put this land use pattern in place. And, um, relying on that, uh, you know, that sort of geometric requirement to allow development to happen rather than to try and discourage it with a whole bunch of additional restrictions.
But Brandon, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to point out that that's all those same restrictions apply to a single family house.
Yeah.
And you could build McMansion and you'd be under the same zoning regulations as a.
Yeah, yeah.
A nine-family.
Yeah. And, and you know, for multifamily in particular, Eric, as I'm sure you know, there's a lot that's going to go into how many units you could get on a parcel, right? You know, first and foremost, you know, what are the utility services?
And parking.
Uh, and we still have parking requirements and parking coverage requirements. And then the zoning geometric requirements, setbacks and height and such. So, um, you know, it requires sort of this exercise that architects and engineers undertake on behalf of development, um, clients to like determine how much can a particular site yield. And we actually worked with, um, BRPC over the last couple of years to have them do a couple of these sort of like bulk massing studies to try and figure out, you know, can we get a certain amount of development? And really what those exercises showed us is that, um, the, the setback requirements, the coverage requirements, parking requirements, height requirements, they, they set the limits on how much, um, building can happen on a person by person basis.
And with, it just, uh, out of curiosity, that, uh, if we're, I don't know how this properly goes through the motions. But, um, if we're, if we're taking the special permits off and somebody says, you know, they're, they want to put 15 to X amount of units in one spot. If there's no special permit, is there traffic flow studies? Is there, um, stuff like that? I guess I'm curious about.
Yeah, well, we would leave in place the site plan review criteria. And it does include things like drainage management and traffic and, um, adequacy of water and sewer facilities. So we can certainly, as we're communicating this more to the greater community, uh, be sure to highlight those things because this is certainly not just like, you know, open the door and let a free for all happen. Um, it's really, um, rely on the existing code that we've created and the procedures that we have in place.
Um, yeah, I guess we're, we're, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. You, you got to talk.
I, I was just, sometimes, uh, my concern is, 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 um, yeah. Almost, uh, in this situation would be, I would be concerned about a little bit of a free for all. Um, and, and over, over development of areas per, per unit. And I understand the setbacks and everything like that. Um. And then, you know, then it, it is also a discussion of, of the big picture, right? Like is, what is Great Barrington? What's the end goal for Great Barrington? Are we shooting to become the next, uh, greatest medium to large town in America? Or are we shooting to become, you know, overtake Pittsfield as far as growth? Like what, what is, you know, that just kind of all ties in for me and, and I'm just curious on, on everybody's thoughts on that, you know?
Hi, uh, do you want to say anything? Does anyone have specific comments?
Okay.
So just specifically, Eric, I mean, really over the last five years, what we've been focused on is creating housing opportunities because we had a housing needs assessment completed and we have 0% vacancy rate. We have very little new housing being constructed, um, particularly in an affordable range. So, and there have been several housing proposals for, let's say, moderate to workforce housing that required special permits that have not been able to get off the ground, um, because of the, um, legal challenges that, um, arise with, with, um, with the special permit process. So, you know, you've got.
Yeah, I, I, I just like to say, um, I'm a late convert to, uh, allowing, uh, these, uh, uses by right. But it was pointed out to me that, uh, in these zones and, and all these B-zones are business zones. That's why it's B. All these business zones allow by right, all these businesses. I mean, you could build a landscaping business, you can put a retail business, you can put a, you know, uh, you know, dozens of businesses in there by right, right? You can't put housing by right. And that just didn't seem right to me. Uh, you know, I mean, it should be prioritizing housing and, uh, the fact that, uh, um, we, these have been on the books for so long, uh, and we haven't been overturned. But I, I, I think it's the right thing to do.
B2, you can do 20,000 square feet of commercial space by right.
You can put in $10 general by.
I, I do like how you are targeting it to that, that corridor. And, and I do understand the thoughts there. I, and, um, I am, I am happy that at the last town meeting that, um, amendment passed that, you know, you, the mixed and affordable. Um, I guess I just want to make sure, you know, I do hear a lot of concerns of, of this, you know? And, and, and I think the focus, um, to move forward would be, you know, make, making all the maps clear of what sections we're talking about, where, where all these little possibilities could happen. Um, I do really appreciate the concern for the industrial, um, trying to conserve the industrial, but I also understand Pedro's thoughts of why can't housing be in there? And that, that is a struggle for, for someone who in the future would love to put up a Morton building for his own business, you know? So I, I understand those ways and, and, uh, stuff. So I, I, I do, you know, get calls every day about the need for housing and, and I understand it, I guess. I, I just, I've been getting some feedback of, you know, and thi- this brings fear, right? To everybody is which, you know, everything brings fear to everybody at this point. But, um, of, of just, how, how do you make it clear of where this can exactly be, um, located and where it can't? And, um, and just easing concerns of, of, um, you know, by, you know, by right, by right just makes, makes. As you know, I don't need to explain that to you, hear about it at all your meetings, but anyhow, thank you.
So yeah, I, you know, I, I really appreciate all the work that you're doing. Thank, you know, this is a great move in the right direction. Um, so thank you for, for bringing this up. Uh, for the I-zone, just going back to that. So if, if let's say, um, a business owner wanted to create housing for their workforce, that they would not be allowed to. Is that correct? Like.
On the same property as a mixed use?
So, so that's the, that's the kind of attention.
Yeah.
So, so if, if we felt strongly one way or the other, are we supposed to tell you right now? Like if, if I'm in favor of, you know, Pedro's idea, I can say yes, I'm in favor. And I mean, I don't know really what, what you're, I mean, I, so I, I just, you know, I, I understand that, you know, we want separate, um, uses, but I also understand that there is such need for housing. And I think we believe that there would be a place for workforce housing on a, on an industrial site. So I think the more that we make it, um, more accessible, I think the better. So thank you.
Chris, but that's, wait, just hang on.
So there will be a public hearing on zoning amendments.
Yeah.
Um, tend to be scheduled for the planning board, March 8th. Uh, so the public, the board, either collectively or individually can submit comments or come that night.
Mm-hmm.
So you, you don't need to.
Yeah.
Have a comment tonight if you're not fully, uh, formed there.
Okay.
So there will be public debate.
March 8th. March 8th is a Friday, I think, probably.
7. March 8th. Or 7, sure, March 14th.
Yeah.
Yeah. March 14th, but who's got it?
All right, so 98th, right?
There will not be anything on the air.
That's so we can continue it over to the 28th if we have just a tsunami of comments.
Anyone else?
So I guess just one other question. So if, if a developer had, you know, had a proposal that they would include workforce housing or affordable housing, a couple A, um, is there any allowances in this kind of, or is that something? Sorry.
There's special permit.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why it's special.
That's how this comes in. Okay.
And I, I, I know we're, we're going to, we're going to debate this further. But my feeling is that, that if we put housing, we open up the I-zone to housing, we'll never have an I-zone. We'll lose it.
That was my question really. Are we giving up, I mean, for years, as long as I've lived in the town, we wanted to get light industry here. And we've never done that. Are we finally just waving the white flag and saying, you know, okay, we're not going to get them, let's put housing there or?
There are very limited sort of light industrial uses that you can't already do in other parts of town. I don't remember the exact, specific ones that are only in I-zone. I wonder if you guys remember.
Off the top of my head.
But there's very few things that you can't do in other levels. But again, it's, it's like, as, um, not to upset, so this is for further discussion. We can discuss it in a couple years.
So you're saying.
Any worries we do?
So you're saying if someone wanted to build the, uh, workforce, you know, housing for their workforce in an industrial zone, they could go through this special permit process and go through all the hoops?
They could, they could, they could go for this special permit process for nine or more.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Right, true.
Versus by right, okay, gotcha.
So last year was a horrible thing. I mean, I, I last year's town meeting, I think we were all grateful that a meeting passed, you buy right for projects in the B2 that have four. So if that's already in place, if somebody does want to include some units that meet the AMI requirements, then they can do that already by right. With site plan review.
Anyone else?
Looking forward to, uh, thank you for all the work you've done.
Well, thanks for the.
And I look forward to talking about more. But I think this is a great start and for having that discussion.
That's great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, hello, I am with Dr. Michael Monroe at 19 Comlock Field Road. And, uh, if I may add something very quickly to this panel, you probably don't recognize the nuance, but having sat through this and hearing he grew up in a family of six in one bathroom. But I think everybody would agree, it's a difference when it's a family versus, not family. But anyway, my point of speaking today is that, um, I came to the parks, uh, commission meeting recently and I was told by Mr. Manning that, that they did not have jurisdiction over, uh, matter I'm about to speak on. And that's to come to the board to address my issue. And that is about the Poochakonic Rail Trail. It has been a horse trail and now signage reads no horses. So I have a number of questions, I think four questions, that I would like, uh, request that the board, uh, answer. And by doing so, place it on, uh, an agenda item at a subsequent select board meeting, please. Um, as said, it's been a horse trail. And, uh, my questions are, one, how did this happen that now signage reads no horses? Uh, question two or three or one, but it is, was this an intentional change of use or some oversight? Um, three, three of our, or we're listening, this is how can this be corrected? Why would be, how can we keep this from happening again? I'd like to give my experiences of riding on that trail. And that is that the children delight in seeing horses that can be petted. These are calm, gentle, uh, horses. And, uh, to them it's a thrill. Uh, had no incidences of any disruption or people unhappy. And, um, the fact that perhaps it was overlooked that horses used the trail is a testament that they haven't had negative impact on the trail. So, um, these are important points I think to be considered. Another point from sitting here tonight, if I may, on William Freeman's, is that, um, with all respect and appreciation, because I'm learning as a new town member, how our town operates, meeting wonderful people. But could it be also put on the next, uh, board meeting, agenda item of perhaps citizens could talk at the beginning of the meeting? This is the second time I've been kept to the end and it's been educational. And I don't mean negative pushback towards people because again, I'm learning. But could it be at the front of the meeting for people maybe can't stay for whatever reason or simply as, as courtesy? Thank you for hearing my, um, questions and my comments.
Thank you. Father, you want to speak? You have a shelf on the floor. Father, you want to shop? How do you start the ones and then what you've got?
So do you have the shelf?
What's that?
Are you all there? Yeah, go ahead.
You're both there to speak.
Michelle, the mayor's 78 Division Street. Um, I just want to address the conversation, I just, um, between the select board and the planning board. I have attended planning board meetings and there's been some really great discussion. And just for the record, I grew up in a family of 10 in one bathroom. I'm playing the kickie stone.
That is wonderful.
Okay, so, you know, it's a different game. Um, with regard to the special permit and removing it from the select board to the planning board, no disrespect to the planning board, um, I don't feel it should be removed from the select board because I see it as an added layer of review. Um, and being a person who has probably exhausted the special permit process during various permits going on with the select board, I was very appreciative that the select board did take on the special permit review. Um, so that's just my personal opinion. Again, it's not disrespect to the planning board. There was conversation regarding industrial zone in my neighborhood. My R2 zone butts right up into this industrial zone. One time a town employee went to me, why did I buy a house in an area that butts an industrial zone? Well, I didn't. I grew up in that house that butts an industrial zone. They used to be agricultural. It used to be a farm there. Now for people who want to keep that industrial zone, spend a weekend up in that, uh, R2 residential area. You have all the banging and noise from Hormels. You have the trucks from Nolan's. You have the trucks from Rogers Trucking. And by the way, in my R2 zone, I look out my back door, I see where the railroad has dumped there. So there's very little protection for the Van Duzelville neighborhood and I resent that. So for the people I hear saying, let's keep that industrial zone, but what that does is keeps it out of your neighbor. So I want that looked at. Uh, during the folklore controversy, there were conversations regarding what would we like to see in that neighborhood as opposed to the industrial uses that are going on there? It has to be used for something. Would I love to see cows there again? Yes, I would, the agricultural use. But housing was one of the items that came up. He wouldn't, you know, the neighborhood probably wouldn't be strongly opposed. I can't speak for every, everyone. But, um, but to have industrial use coupled with workforce housing, that's too much. Uh, that neighborhood's been abused a long time. Garfield met with me up in my neighborhood back in December. And we talked about this as well. So, uh, think about that. You want to keep that industrial zone up there, you're hurting an R2, um, neighborhood. And because of that industrial zone, that's why I'm glad there's a special permit process. Thank you.
Hello, you're Shaker, I'm 78 Comlock Plain Road for the record. I'm directing my planning board, just December 25th statement. I made Rick Solan apply for two special perms in a variance with the ZBA, to a special permit in the variance with the ZBA and a planning board site plan review. Tonight I'm voicing my concerns to the real life's capability of high intensity 3-mile daytime, specifically 20-mile nighttime range. of high intensity 3-mile daytime, specifically 20-mile nighttime range. Where the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission Regional Transportation Plan Recommendation of Runway Abilitation, estimated cost of $3,232,000 is going to come from for a colost to Great Barrington Regional Airport. Municipalities that host these airports are continuing to leverage them as a resource for economic development tourism potential. Who the GBR, Great Barrington Regional Town Manager is, of 16,500-plus supporters of airport petitions to save the Great Barrington Airport with flight school, letters supporting the airport, including owners and patrons, pulling their planes out, leaving 13 derelict planes at a blighted airport that has had no maintenance since Fall Pass in 2004. The June 22 floodplain overlay district amendment for a development dependent on water requiring late local state and federal permits. The May 23 amendment, performance standards. Hereafter, no land building or structure shall be used in a manner that creates any dangerous injuries, infectious or otherwise objectionable fire, explosion or other hazard, noise or smoke, dust or dirt from any form of air pollution, electrical or other disturbance, or there are any other dangerous or objectionable substance, conditioner or helmet, and any amount that adversely affects the surrounding area or premises. Airports are not located in residential zones. An concern regarding the hazardous raised combustion facility in our service to drinking water, and as to why there is no well-protected plan. On August 22, 2020, during that airport special permit application, Mr. Hamkins sent a letter to the select board cautioning to seek legal counsel before granting a special permit due to overlapping and most likely federal government FAA vested rights. So I'm asking this select board, planning board, town manager, and assistant town manager to do just that, seek that legal opinion, and also to how the aforementioned would affect the safety and health of not just me, but all airport immediate vicinity abutters, all residents of this community, the abutting village of North Egremon Upstream, the abutting town of Sheffield Downstream, both areas served by drinking water supplied from the Great Barrington aquifer, and properties upwind and downwind of the airport to ensure the well-being right, the well-being right to enjoy and quality of life and liberty for all. And I would like to actually make a comment about the affordable housing in an industrial zone. From an outsider, it sort of looks like the town is putting forth the low-class income people in the most undesirable zones anywhere industrial. Thanks.
So you know what else? No one has a hand up? Any media tie? If not, we are assured by your announcement unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.